Okay, let's stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, welcome back, everyone. It's gonna be a great year. Do we have any citizens' comments?
No room for citizens today.[38.61][38.61](Laughter).
Any special recognitions?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, we do have a few special recognitions. Thank you to Mrs. Holloway for sharing some important information with us. I'd like to recognize the passing of three retired Auburn Public School teachers. Each made a significant contribution to the Auburn Public Schools during their time as educators. Mary Ellen C. Boyle passed away on August 25th, 2022. She was a reading teacher in the elementary school. Theresa Harrow passed away on July 27th of 2022. She was a music teacher at the middle school. And Muriel J. Funka passed away on May 29th of 2022. She was the home economics teacher at the high school and then at the middle school. If we could please have a moment of silence.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Will be missed. Okay. Seeking approval for the minutes of 14, 2022.
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes of June 14, 2022.
Second.
Aye.
Do we have student representatives?
We do not seem to be having student representatives this evening. I think we're in conflict with the soccer game, which seemingly is more important at this point.[131.66][131.66](Laughter).
Go Auburn soccer. That's right.
Sounds good. All right, we'll move right along to the superintendent to court. Thank you, Madam Chair.
So, in the past, last year, we instituted a spotlight on students, where we invite students from one of our schools to talk a little bit about their learning in our buildings. Tonight, however, is going to be a spotlight on our staff. So I'd like to just share that we've had a great start to the school year. I was at the school building on the very first day of school, and it seemed like they hadn't left. Kids were in classrooms, they were engaged, they were navigating around the building, teachers were on point. It was just, it seemed like, you know, before we had left, and it was really just a great feeling to have them all back in. So I'm going to begin our introductions this evening by introducing our new administrators, and I'm pleased to welcome four new administrators to our leadership team. Maybe you can just stand for a moment. They've already demonstrated commitment and hard work in their new role, and I'm looking forward to where they're gonna lead us in the future. So first, Alan Keller, our new assistant superintendent. We welcome him. Seems like he's been here forever already, so that's a good thing. Greg Walton, our director of pupil services, has been with us for some time, and we're happy to have him in this new role. Brooke Beverly is the new principal of Bryn Mawr School, already on roller skates, getting those kids on the right bus, thankfully. And Melissa LaBeum, former teacher, joins us as assistant principal at Auburn High School. So welcome. We're happy to have all of them with you.
Awesome. That's great. Thank you so much for stepping up, and you guys are gonna be amazing. We have a great team, so.
And we'll move on to the introduction of new teaching staff. This is a longstanding tradition here in Auburn, where we introduce our new staff to the community. They'll be introduced by their building principals. Mr. DeLongchamp was unable to make it this evening, so Mrs. LaBeum will introduce the new staff at Auburn High School.
We have a wonderful staff this year. We're really excited to have them as part of our team, and they've gotten off to a great start so far. We have three new teachers joining us in our social studies department. The first is Allison Leferye. Second, Jake Landry. And the third is Chris Maxum. Joining us in the TV and digital media department is Stephen Scott. Joining our special education department is Lisa Petke. She's unable to be here tonight because her classes began at Worcester State for her master's program, so good reason to not be here.
Good reasons.
Joining us, not new to us, but new to us as a full-time teacher, member of our staff, is Nick Bartlett in the PE department. And we also have hired a new athletic trainer, who is Tim Harold, who's been a wonderful addition to our sports staff this year. I believe he may also be at the soccer game this evening, too.[305.52][305.52](Laughter).
Makes sense. Thank you very much, Mrs. LaBeum. Next, could I invite up Mr. Desto for Auburn Middle School?
Good evening, everybody. Before I begin, I just wanna say something that's on my mind a lot, which is how grateful I am to be here. And the opening day, I looked out at my staff in the cafeteria, and I just thought to myself, this is an amazing collection of people. And, you know, basically, when you're a principal, you're only as good as your superintendent and your school committee, giving you the resources to do what you have to do, and you've all given us that at our middle school, and we want you to know that we're very grateful for it, okay? Part of that is the three new people I have. We have like seven people new to our school, but only three new to the district. And so I'll begin by introducing, in the music department, our new band teacher and band director is Jonathan Schmidt. And John comes to us from Gardner, and he's such an amazing guy. He's the co-director of the MIT marching band, and gonna get us playing better than them pretty soon.[378.16][378.16](Laughter). Been doing STEM work, science work better than them. Also, new to us in the history department in seventh grade social studies is Seth Ebling. And you might have seen Seth come in a little bit late. He was, he coaches soccer at Nipmuck, and they're coming from an eight-nothing victory over Wachusett, so they ran up the score. We like our teachers aggressive, so.[403.12][403.12](Laughter). Seth, we welcome Seth. And also, our new guidance counselor, she's actually working with the sixth graders, who are off to a wonderful start so far this year, is Lindsay Ryan. Is Lindsay here somewhere?
Yeah.
Okay. Hi, Lindsay. And Lindsay came to us from Oxford High School, where she had two years' experience there. And Lindsay is also coaching our middle school field hockey team. She was the captain of the team in college and so forth. So we've got a great staff, really excited about the year, and hoping that the principal doesn't mess it up.[436.12][436.12](Laughter). Thank you so much, and I'll turn it back over to you, Dr. Chamberlain.
Thank you, Mr. Desto. And could we next invite up Dr. Lopez from Swanson Road Intermediate School?
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me back. It's great to be back in the school committee room. I too wanna echo everyone's sentiments so far. It's really been a wonderful start to have all of the students back and all of the staff. It's really been a nice, refreshing beginning to a great new year. I have four new staff members this year. I'll start with Megan Kazuski. She's a special educator in our new language-based classroom. She's had a phenomenal start to the school year and also worked our summer program, so welcome, Megan. I also have another special educator, Lynn Macia, who couldn't make it this evening, taking care of children. She's not at the soccer game.[489.03][489.03](Laughter). And then I have two new music teachers, who are actually at Swanson Road as we speak, distributing the wonderful instruments to our up-and-coming budding musicians. Our first is Theresa Terlado, and she is our generalist, and she's also our band instructor. And I also have Kaylee Corvo, who is going to be our strings teacher, and she's also a journalist. So I welcome all four of them, and looking forward to a great year together. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Lopez. And now if I could have Ms. Beverly come up for Bryn Mawr School?
How are you? I just wanna say how amazing it is to be part of Auburn's team, and to kind of come back to where my home community was. I grew up in Auburn. I had Mrs. Holloway as a sixth-grade math teacher.[548.54][548.54](Laughter). So, we have a few connections. I won't tell you that math was not my strongest subject.[557.29][557.29](Laughter). But as we go through, it's a pleasure to go through and introduce some of our new staff. I'm gonna start with the staff that is able to make it here and join us today. Joining us in our special education team, we have our intensive special needs teacher, Erin Herakowitz.
Aye.
One of our modern special education teachers, Deidre Levesque. Did I get it right this time? I will, by the end of the year. Sharing with, over at Packagog, we have our gym teacher, we have Ashlyn DeRosa. A few other staff members we're excited to welcome who aren't able to join us today. We have Cassie Moriarty, who is our new guidance counselor, and Lisa Wheeler, who is our new secretary over at Bryn Mawr School. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And Mrs. Stanek for Packagog, please come on down.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you so much for all of your support. It is wonderful to be here with all of you tonight. So I'm gonna make poor Ms. DeRosa stand up again, so she is our physical education teacher that we share with Bryn Mawr, and the poor thing was just stuck in bumper-to-bumper traffic, so thank you for making it this evening. Also, we have two new special educators at Packagog. We have Ms. Kathy King, who is our intensive special needs teacher, and we have Allison Siminow, who is our special educator as well. So we are happy and excited to have them, and we look forward to a great year. And if anybody heard, there was a little excitement at Packagog this afternoon, and they did not miss a beat. They were working on the generator, which then meant we lost power for multiple times throughout the afternoon, but we had an assembly with the Omega Man. He was there, and we didn't miss a beat, and neither did any of those new staff members. So we're off to a great start. Thank you, everyone.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Any comments from, ready?
Welcome to the district. It's a great district to work in. I purred, so.[691.44][691.44](Laughter).
I hope you have as much fun working and teaching in Auburn as I did, because I did 41 years, and I hated to retire, but it was time.
I wish you guys all a great year, and look forward to meeting you guys and getting to know you.
And good luck, have a great year.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, welcome aboard, everyone. We're very excited and thankful to have you in our district. So if you guys wanna all come up, and we'll shake your hands, and then you can go home, or you can stay. It's completely up to you.
It's riveting to you guys.
We're getting that traffic.[724.18][724.18](Laughter). One mean line down.
Very boring.
Good luck, have a good year.
It's great to meet you.
I know.
Hey, welcome to Auburn.
Well, I know, and thank you so much.
Welcome.
Nice to meet you. Welcome.
Thank you for coming.
Have a great year.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Happy New Year.
Welcome.
Happy New Year.
Great start to the new year.
Happy New Year.
Thank you.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
I love doing Auburn.
Hello, have a great year.
Thank you, good to see you.
Have a wonderful year. Thank you so much.
Good to see you.
Cheers.
Six, nine, wow.
Yeah, we're rocking on.
Have a wonderful year.
Awesome.
Great to have you.
Thanks for coming.
Have a great year, welcome.
Hi, good to see you.
Nice to meet you, too.
Nice to meet you.
Thank you so much, nice to meet you.
Have a great year.
Thanks so much.
Great to have you, that's okay.
That's all right.
Thanks so much.
Awesome, awesome.
Hi.
Congratulations.
You know, my kid never mentioned.
Nice to meet you.
Oh, okay.
Thanks for the school year.
Dr. Stanton.
Yeah, yeah.
Bye.
Bye.
You know, my kid never mentioned that you ran out of electricity. My kid never mentioned.
Congratulations.
Yeah, congratulations.
Thank you.
I have no hands on the table.[797.44][797.44](Laughter).
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have no hands on the table.[805.24][805.24](Laughter).
Good to see you.
Good to see you.
Yep, thank you.
Everyone's gone.
Everyone's gone.
And now we're worse.
Looks like a great group.
Oh, hi. I didn't know I was getting a formal hello.
I didn't know what.
I was getting a formal hello.
Yes, I am the coloring lady. Hi, how are you?
Oh, man.
I thought Chris was back there, Dick's back there, huh?
Yes. Oh, yeah, we'll move right along. Okay, back on track.
The hand from beyond.
Yes.
Yeah. All right, so we're moving right on to staff achieving professional teaching status.
So this is another big accomplishment, right? First, starting in a district and getting your feet kind of immersed in the culture of the district is very exciting for our new staff, but I'd also like to recognize those teachers who are achieving professional teaching status, meaning that they have been with us, they've started their fourth year with us officially, and they have demonstrated excellent commitment to quality teaching and good care for students. So I'm going to quickly read their names. At Bryn Mawr School, we have Gillian Anderson. At Packagog, Carrie Estrella, the school nurse, and Alexa Kennedy, a kindergarten teacher. For preschool Bryn Mawr and Packagog, we have Shiloh Vosberg, who is our team chair. At Swanson Road, we have Terry O'Donnell, school counselor, Samantha Engelhardt, school counselor, Jen Britcher, school social worker, Gina Benvenuti, grade-three teacher, Michelle Caplet, grade-three teacher, Deidra D'Agostino, grade-three, Rhonda Murray, grade-three, Brady Dyer, grade-four, Stephanie Fontaine, grade-five. And at Auburn Middle School, we have Danielle LeBeuf, Joseph Green, Kyla Birch at Auburn High School, all achieving professional teacher status. We are pleased and proud, right? When we can have consistent folks in our district and folks that stay and demonstrate a commitment to kids and to quality teaching, that gives us a lot to be proud of. So we're happy to have them as well. And they were recognized at the new teacher breakfast that was held the week before school began, so they were excited to do that, too.
That's awesome. A lot of great people.
A lot of great people. Yep.
All righty, and I see we got some donations.
We did. So the following donations have been graciously provided to the Auburn Public School. Mr. and Mrs. Gerard DeLongchamp donated $50. Mr. and Mrs. Raymond Bodoin donated $25 in memory of Stephen Dooley, retired graphic arts teacher at Auburn High School. The money is to be used for the purchase of STEM supplies, and it will be deposited into the Auburn High School gift account and used as directed. Additionally, Jackson and Lee Lobo have donated $550 to the Auburn Integrated Preschool Program, and this will be a tremendous benefit to the overall programming that takes place there. So we thank them very much for their gracious gifts.
That's very generous.
I'll make a motion to accept with gratitude the donation of $50 from Mr. and Mrs. Gerard DeLongchamp, and $25 from Mr. and Mrs. Raymond Bodoin in memory of Stephen Dooley, as well as $550 donation to the Auburn Integrated Preschool Program from Jackson and Lee Lobo.
I'll second that.
All right, any discussion?
I just have one question. When did we lose Mr. Dooley? Has it been a while, or recent, or?
It was last spring.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it was last spring.
Thank you to those people that donated, those very generous and thoughtful.
Do we need to vote?
Oh, yes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, moving on to unfinished business.
Yes, so our first topic is school safety. When we left this past school year, this was obviously a topic that was very much at the forefront of our thinking. It always remains there, but as such, with what happened in Uvalde, Texas last spring, things have dramatically ramped up with what we need to pay attention to, obviously. And so throughout the summer, we've spent a lot of time on school safety. All of our multi-hazard plans for each school have been updated in collaboration with the Auburn Police Department and the Auburn Fire Department. We also, with the guidance of the Department of Homeland Security and the Massachusetts State Police Commonwealth Fusion Center, conducted safety audits of each school building. They actually have a template that they walked, they walked through it with us for two buildings, and they train you so that then you can do the remaining buildings with your district safety team. So that took place over the summer, and each of the reports that came out of that didn't identify any big emergent issues that had to be corrected right away. They had some minor suggestions that we're working at implementing most of those, but the most notable change was already going to happen before the audits, and that was the locking of the first doors at Swanson Road, Packagog, Bryn Mawr, and Auburn High School. And those were equipped with a camera similar to you we use here at the building, so now those outside doors are closed and locked, along with the interior doors are closed and locked, just providing another level of safety at each of those schools. So that's going quite well. On August 29th, the first day that our staff was back, the district safety team did an overview of Alice training for all staff. Later in October, we will be conducting active shooter drills with staff, modified versions for our middle school and high school students. So we're working with the district safety team and the Auburn Police Department to formulate how that's going to go in October. Each school has their own safety team, which is again reviewing the multi-hazard plans and all of the things that need to be in place in each building, and the district safety team will throughout the year be conducting unannounced visits at schools, just to check and see, is there any door that was left propped open, or is there anything that, once you have a school full of children, that becomes more obvious to be an issue? So they're going to, they've all kind of gonna take their turns with just popping in at different buildings and to see if there's anything noticed. But again, the multi-hazard plans are in place. We continue to go through procedural reviews to make sure that we have anything we might need in the event there were an emergency. But yeah, so I'm in the process now of updating a district-wide multi-hazard plan that hadn't been updated for several years, and that will be reviewed with the police and fire department and then submitted to DESI as well. So a lot of focus on school safety. That was the, one of the primary focus of my discussion with staff on that very first day, that school safety begins with the relationships we have with kids, and it moves out from there, right? To the classroom, to the building, to the community. And so we're going to have a heavy emphasis on making sure we know every student in our building, because if you know every student, you can intervene if something were to come to light. So a lot of emphasis on safety and on taking care of kids.
Beth, if I could ask?
Yes.
Can teachers still take their class outside and out through like a side door or something? Or is there a protocol that they have to go through a certain front door, or?
You mean if they were going out on a, like a nature walk or something like that? They would know, it depends on the building, right? With how that works, but certainly they can still do that, but the office needs to be made aware, and anytime children are outside, we're equipped with a walkie-talkie.
Okay. And if they go out, can they go out a side door? Is that still, okay, so does that door automatically lock when they go out?
Yeah, all of our, all of our exterior doors are locked.
Okay.
Yeah, and we have, we have limited the entry points, so if they go out a side door, they may have to come in through the front door.
Okay.
Right? So that we know in and out. But there are very designated areas that they can use for that.
Okay.
Yeah, because we still, kids still need to be outside.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's a great question, Gail. Anyone else have questions or comments? No? No? Okay. Just a quick question. When we do introduce or go over the Alice training, I mean, obviously, a watered-down version for the kids, are parents gonna know, like, ahead of time exactly what's gonna be said? I'm just picturing kids coming home, telling these crazy stories, and everyone, like, what did they teach you, so.
Yeah, we're working on that right now for kids and for staff. So when we did our last active shooter drill with staff, it was really difficult to go through, even though there were no surprises. Everyone was well-prepared, knew what was going to happen. They were told the time it would happen, the date. There was no surprises, it was still scary. So we're working on making sure that it needs to be effective, but we don't want it to be traumatic for anyone, right? That's, it's a fine line to walk. So the safety team is working on that now, so that everyone will be well-informed with what's going to happen.
All right, great. On that note, can I ask, so they will not be shooting beanbags at the teachers? Because that's what they did that first time, and that really freaked everybody out.
Well, so the first time was when we went through, that was an extensive, almost train-the-trainer that a lot of staff went through, and we were shot at.
Yeah.
The one I think that was honestly most difficult, I can only speak for Bryn Mawr, that was when I was principal there, was when they were in our building. So when we went through the training, we were at the high school. And so maybe for the high school teachers, that was most difficult, because it was their kinda, right? That's our home away from home, right? And so the one we did at Bryn Mawr, which was, again, everyone knew what was gonna happen. They were going to come in the front door, there was going to be a mock argument, then someone was going to push through, like, we told them every step of the way, but the sheer sound of that in your school building was what was so troubling, you know? And so we're gonna try and mitigate that and not make it quite as realistic the next time, because it just was really hard on a lot of people.
Well, I know personally teachers that got hurt from the beanbag, so that's why I was asking. Oh, yeah. Big bruises, and they tripped over each other trying to get away from it, and they were...
I don't know if they've modified it, but when I did it, they had, they looked kind of like Nerf guns, but with little round balls. And it, and it is, it still hurts, like, you get shot with it, but I found that, you're right, it was in my building, it was very, like, I wouldn't say traumatizing, I would say, like, it was very telling. Like, we all left very solemnly that day, and it was interesting to show what, like, a traditional lockdown, which was what many students were taught, like, during the Columbine era, what a traditional lockdown would have yielded, as opposed to what Alice training. So I think it's very useful, especially for the staff. I think that having students do it, a watered-down version, is still important, because it teaches them not to, like, sit and hide and wait. It teaches them to act, in a sense. So I think it's important.
Yeah, and the one we do in October, they won't be shooting at staff.
Okay, good.
It will be that sound.
Yeah.
But it's not, there won't be any shooting at anyone.
Okay, because I personally know of several people that got hurt and actually missed quite a bit of school because of the injuries, and that's foolish.
Yeah.
To have it be that severe.
Yeah, no, it won't be anything like that.
Through the chair, I have to say, seeing the John O'Brien and the other police presence at the schools, speaking with the parents, it was just really nice to see, and the kids actually enjoyed it, because, at least the younger kids that I saw, because they saw the police officer who happens to also be their soccer and basketball coach outside, which was just really nice to have that, them there at the start of school.
The police department have been exceedingly generous with their time, as the fire department is when our fire drills and all of that roll around, but they've been very generous with, we had folk, we had a presence at every building, every morning and in the afternoon. Officer O'Brien is off and running, he's here, there, and everywhere in our building, seeing people and getting to know the kids and the staff and all of that, so, yeah, we have a great partnership with our town departments that can help us do that. It's been, it's very comforting and reassuring, and then just an overall, like, positive vibe, right? That we all get along, and we're all here to help one another, right? Like a community should be, so.
Definitely. Yeah, they are amazing. We are very lucky.
Yeah, very lucky.
Absolutely, yeah.
That's true.
Okay, anything else, school safety?
All right, let's talk COVID.
That is unfinished business, unfortunately. It is still unfinished business. So I have shared with the community DESI's most recent COVID-19 advisory. The protocols have not changed very much from last school year. You know, the nurses can conduct rapid tests on students who are symptomatic at school, obviously, if we have the permission of the parent, which is now included on our student emergency form. We are, I'm, I'm going to give it a try to not send out an email every day. I am going to send out a bit of an update on a Tuesday and a Friday, but I am more so going to be communicating our COVID counts through the data dashboard, which is located on our website. I've had a mixed, mixed feedback from families, but mostly, they like that I communicate with them, but not necessarily about COVID. So they like to hear that, but I don't know that they all want the counts. We are going to be very cautious. If there is a situation where we notice three or four cases in a particular classroom or group, we've crafted a short email to notify the families in that classroom that or group, we've crafted a short email to notify the families in that classroom that there seems to be an uptick of COVID-19, to please be more vigilant about symptoms. But other than that, you know, we're going to try and just have a regular school year. I've been, you know, communication with Eileen Alexander from the Board of Health, just to make sure we're all on the same page, and she agrees, this is the way we're headed. But they are always at the ready to help us with anything we might need. So COVID still exists, but I will tell you, to have all of our staff in the Auburn High School auditorium on that first day, it just felt so good. And the buzz in the, you know, we had breakfast for them and all of that, the buzz there, they all got, they could get their new ID badge and all of that, it was just great. So it's like having a party and everybody came. It just felt really good to have them there, so. Yeah, so more to come, you know, we'll keep you apprised as COVID unfolds here, and hopefully we just move right along through the school year.
Yeah, that's our plan. Is this link on our website for parents to look up if they want?
I've sent it out, I think, three times already.
Yeah, one call, okay.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So I can post it on the website, though, without a problem.
Okay.
Actually, I shouldn't say that. All this information is in a box next to the data dashboard.
Oh, perfect.
That just opened, so that is there.
That's perfect, okay. Great. All right, so let's move on to new business. Looks like we have food service collaborative agreement letter for FY23.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I am sharing this on behalf of Janice King, our Director of Food Services. The Food Service Department participates in the Massachusetts School Buying Group for a collaborative bidding for district purchases of food and beverages. All bids have been accepted and awarded by the MSBG for FY23. This letter is presented to you to acknowledge the award recipient companies and request your vote of approval and acceptance. They were awarded according to MGL Chapter 30B and meet the USDA School Nutrition Program requirements for procurement. So we do need...
I'm seeking a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the MSBG bid for district purchases of food and beverage for the 2022-2023 school year.
I'll second it.
Any discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, it's a vote. Thank you, Janice King, for going through and doing all that. Okay, the school department warrant articles for fall special town meeting.
Thank you. Yeah, so there will be a special town meeting on Tuesday, October 18th, and we have before you several warrant articles we'll be bringing forward. The first three, you will note, are really corrections to those voted at the May 3rd town meeting, really Scribner's errors with account numbers and such, so none of these have changed. The purpose of each was moving money from one account to another to support the Swanson Oil Tank for the first, the removal of the oil tank and the conversion to propane at Swanson Road for those first two, Article 20 and 22. And then the last one is the movement of some money from the building, Bryn Mawr Building Rehab Interior Door Upgrades, to the final phase of the Sprinkler Project. So again, these were all voted and accepted, the content that hasn't changed at all, it was really just some minor tweaks that had to be made, but to make it all legal, we need to bring those back before the town. The last three are new. So the first one being to see if the town will amend Article 3 of the May town meeting. This is to increase our budget in the amount of $102,856. This has to do with the electric bid that we entered into with the town earlier this spring. Our electric rate now has gone from nine cents to 12 cents per kilowatt, and so the town also will be bringing forward a similar warrant article to increase their budget line to support the electricity across the town. We just had to do it separately, so they did theirs and we're doing ours. So we work closely with the town to determine the best way to figure out what that might be to cover our costs. The next one is a revision of our requests for our Medicaid receipts. Initially, we had requested $100,000, we're now requesting $125,000, as seemingly our receipts have increased. The Medicaid receipts are used to support special education students, their needs, their programming, testing, and the such. So that's a typical thing that happens at this time of the year at the special town meeting, based on what we anticipate we'll get for receipts. And the third one is to amend the use of $95,000 that is in our CIP for building rehab here at the central office, to move that money, that was to replace the windows here, to install backflow devices on the water mains here at the Randall Building, Swanson Road, Bryn Mawr School, and Packerchog, as well as to abate any asbestos associated with that change. This was something, there was, there's been a change, and I'm not a plumbing expert, so if anybody wants details, I'll have Mr. Fahy come. But as he describes it to me, this is a new requirement of the state plumbing codes. The Water Department came and inspected our buildings, we have to have these backflows in place, it ensures the safety of the water flow into the building, and it's going to cost close to the full $95,000 in order to do so. So I don't know if anyone has any questions on any of those, but I can only go so far with the plumbing, but anything else I may be able to help you with.
So if I understand this, they're gonna forego the HVAC for our windows here and work, take the money and do the necessary-
Repurpose the money.
Sewer repairs.
Yeah, this building still seems to be in a state of a little bit of limbo-
Yeah.
-based on other things happening in the town-
Right.
Right, with the public safety complex and all of that. So it doesn't seem prudent to spend almost $100,000 on windows here.
They're gonna tear it down or something.
Yeah, you know, if we can use it for something else that we really have to do in our buildings, it seemed to make good sense to repurpose it that way.
Yeah, you'll be wearing five sweaters all winter, but-
Well, we can stop hitting their blanket.
Yeah, I know, I was putting it good for Christmas from the committee.
Nice Ugg blanket. Work on that.
I think we've been pushing those windows off for like eight years.
We have. And it's funny you say that, because then when Joe said, "We have to ask for this money, we have to ask for this money," he said, "Well, I don't think we're gonna use this money, so I think we need to repurpose this way."
Well, that's a good sacrifice on your part.
Yeah.
All right, I need a motion for-
I'll make a motion to approve the Auburn Public School warrant articles for the special town meeting being held on October 18th, 2022.
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
Nope.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and it looks like we have an out-of-state field trip request.
Thank you. This is a request for 18 Auburn High School students to attend the Model UN Conference at Brown on November 11th through 13th. This trip has been approved in previous years, but being a newish superintendent, I don't want to take anything for granted, and I think these should still continue to come before you, but I will leave that up to you to approve, just like all out-of-state conferences, so that you're aware of the situation. So I put that forward for any questions that you may have.
I'll make a motion to approve the Auburn High School field trip to the Model UN Conference at Brown University on November 11th through the 13th, 2022.
I'll second that.
Okay, any questions or discussion?
What kind of housing do they have for our students? Because I assume they're staying over.
Yeah, I think that's in the dorm.
Oh.
One of the dorms. I think they stay over.
Yeah, I looked, I couldn't see in the packet.
11:11 to 11:13, so.
They must be staying over.
It's usually the dorms they stay in, yeah.
Well, as long as there's no bunk beds without railings.
Oh, I know, that poor guy, right?
No.
Yeah.
A little leaguer. They put him up in dorms, and he fell out of the bunk bed because he wasn't used to it, and he got seriously hurt.
Yeah, really hurt.
These are also high school students, so.
Yeah.
I feel like, I kinda hope they don't fall out of a bunk bed. You never know.
Yeah, you never know.
Beautiful campus, though.
Yeah, oh, Brown, yeah.
I wanna go. Is there any way we can hook me up with that?
They came and spoke, through the chair, I'm sorry. They came and spoke at one of my first meetings at the end of the year last year, and I was actually very moved by them, and I went home and told my daughter, who was entering high school, about it. So I'm excited for them.
Really is an awesome program. Yeah. Yes. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Did we get an update on that trip when they get back?
Yeah.
Absolutely.
All right. Okay, let's see, moving on to flossing. Hot topic.
Flossing?
Oh, yeah.
I thought you said flossing.
Mrs. Hall, right.
Better get those hair nades.
So seemingly, this is the never-ending story when we come to buses, that it seems like we always have more kids than we have space for. If we looked at each of our buses as of today, we've had an increase from about five students, and in some cases, 28 students. We've had a lot more ridership at our high school, which is very unusual for us. But unusual and good, because we have the room at the high school, because we don't typically have a lot of riders there. So that seems to have worked out okay. We also worked with AA to reassign some of their higher-capacity buses, they have 77-passenger and 83-passenger buses, we've redeployed some of those to the larger routes. And starting next week, they're going to start really buckling down on counting the students as they get on the bus, so that we have very solid counts. I anticipate that we may have some buses that are crowded, but we also know that we have lots of folks who, they come, they take out a bus pass, and they don't ever use it. It's almost like they want it as a safety, just in case someday their child can't get to school, they can ride the bus. So we really need to just let it kind of tease out a little bit. But I've already spoken to AA, we're trying to strategize on if we had to add a bus, how could we add a bus, where could we add a bus without disrupting the whole apple cart? So that's in discussion if we should need it. But it really is going to depend on once we get those solid counts. So I will share more about that with you. It's just these first couple of weeks, sometimes somebody's nervous to take the bus, so they're going to take the bus, but the first few days, they don't ride. So it doesn't seem appropriate yet to try and figure that out. We'll give it through this week, and then we'll start next week and the week after, and then we'll really have a much better sense of what we might need for transportation, so. But so far, so good. I think our latest day was one day that we cleared, and it was like 4:20 for the first week of school. That's really good, you know, really, really good, as kids are learning where they're going and what bus they should or shouldn't be on and all of that. And for the most part, it's been shortly after 4 o'clock, 4:09, 4:10. So the first couple of weeks, that's a pretty good run. So, so far, so good. I have to attribute some of Mandy, Caitlin, and Kelly Ackley, the girls in our office, they did a tremendous amount of work upfront with making sure that kids were in the right place. Then it was their suggestion that we have a bus pass pickup here at Central Office, and what that allowed them to do was, if, you know, somebody might come in and say, "No, I don't think it's bus 6," even though the pass says 6. So then they could sit with them, look at the route, talk them through it, and either correct it or say, "Oh, okay, that is your stop," you know? I think that really helped a lot, because a lot of the issues that we've seen in past years, we really haven't had this year, with kids with incorrect passes or any of that. So that's attributed to their hard work on that, so. They have, already have more ideas for next year, right? Yeah, they're already working on how we're gonna do it better again next year, so.
Through the chair, I just want to say an additional thank you to those three ladies, because they were amazing. I came and helped a little bit where I could, and I, they did a great job. And it was crazy, like, it would come in ebbs and flows, and then there were like 20 people were trying to, and so I just think that they really deserve, like, a major pat on the back, because they worked really hard, and when there was a mistake, they changed it very quickly, and that's something that, like, we should really do, because people could come in and bring their stuff. It was great to see everyone, that was wonderful.
Yeah, agreed, thank you.
It was another nice connection with families.
Yeah.
You know, which is, which is good, so.
Great, awesome. Well, we will do that again. Thank you, Mandy and team, for pulling that off.
So through the chair, if there was another bus to be added, when would we think, would they be able to add it this year? Is that the thought?
They would.
Yeah.
But that's a strategic thing to do, right?
Right, right, yeah.
We really have to strategize how to make, so what am I hoping? That we don't have to do that.
I guess you'd have to pay more, too.
We would, we would. Yep, but if it's school safety and getting kids to school, then we have to do that, you know? But we just have to let the dust settle a little bit before we make that jump, because that's a big commitment, you know, to adding a bus. So we want to make sure that we're maximizing everything we're doing first.
Well, thank you for all your work, everyone's work on that. All right, moving on to the strategic plan update.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So this summer, we had a group of over 40, that kind of ebbed and flowed, I guess, between 20 and 40, groups of parents, teachers, support staff, administrators, guardians, that gathered together for five meetings to take a look at the results and recommendations from the equity audit conducted last spring, and to try and marry that with our current version of our strategic plan. The strategic plan goes back to 2018, and so trying to pull these together was a bit of a task. We're getting there, we're not there yet. So in your packet, I've included the cover sheet, and I'm going to share out the link again, probably with the entire community at this point, because this is a live document. I was going to print all the supporting back pages, but it almost doesn't make sense, it's kind of designed to be online, but you'll see each of the categories, for instance, in teaching and learning, underneath that, one of the main goals is to enhance the social emotional learning supports district-wide. When you follow that link, it brings you to another set of steps that we feel like are important to make those social emotional learning supports to be in place. And then beyond that is a further action plan, with what are the specific nitty-gritty steps that have to happen. So it's still very much in draft form. When we had this committee meeting, we didn't have students on it. I thought that it could be difficult to get kids in the summertime, but we need to hear from our kids. So I want to bring this still in its draft form to some of our students at Auburn High School and Auburn Middle School. Mrs. LeBeau and Mr. Keller will be helping me with that, to run some listening sessions, to see what is it our kids think need to be included here? And then to have several parent nights and staff nights, so now that, or staff afternoons, when staff are in buildings, that we can kind of go through some of the highlights of this and make sure that everything our community wants included is here. So again, it is still a rough draft, but we've come a long way from a 60-plus-page equity plan and a four-year-old strategic plan to narrowing things down into something that I think is going to be a really effective guide for us as we move forward.
Awesome, yeah. And thank you to everyone involved. It is a great committee, I'm excited, and it seems like we really accomplish a lot every time we all come together, so.
And I will bring that team back together. The commitment of the folks in the summer was great, everybody participated, and it was a real conversation, so it was really good.
Really good, great, excited for that. Okay, on to the superintendent's entry plan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Again, as is typically the case when you, when a new superintendent begins his or her tenure, there is an entry plan that's drafted. It's a little bit different in this particular case, because I've been kind of in this role since January, and I've been in the district a long time. But nonetheless, it's just as important to guide my first full year in this role. So I do provide a bit of an overview, and then I put this into two phases, some of the ongoing work and some of the new work. So in the ongoing work, certainly that strategic plan and moving that forward is the first big bullet item, continuing to build a communication structure across the district. And when I say communication, I don't just mean one call, right? It's how do we welcome families into our buildings? When do we do that? What happens during those times? What else do families need to be, to feel like you're part of their child's education? So we'll be looking at some other ways to enhance that, and also continued safety, look, right? So safety is gonna stay front and center as we move forward. So those are things that have already been working on, along with collaborating with the following town boards, right? Everyone's been great, all of you, the leadership team, assistant town manager and town manager, police, fire, all of these folks have already done a lot to contribute to my tenure in this role, and to continue to build those relationships is what's going to further us as a community. And then if we look at Phase 1 new work, it talks here about the listening sessions for staff and families at each of our schools that will allow me to connect with them in different ways. Listening sessions at the high school and middle school and Swanson Road with some of our students, not only about the strategic plan, but what do they value about the Auburn Public Schools? What do they see as our successes? What would they like to see improved? And what do they just want me to know about their experience in our buildings? Continue to foster connections with our state legislature, the Finance Board, our leadership team, and then later on in March, I hope to provide you with an update of how both of those phases of the entry plan have gone. And this is not a final draft, so if any of you feel there's anything that should be added on to or taken out of this, it can certainly also take place. So I look for your feedback on the entry plan and how you'd like me to proceed.
All right, can I get a motion to accept, and then we can discuss?
I make a motion to approve the superintendent's entry plan for the 2022-2023 school year.
I'll second that.
Anyone have any questions or comments?
A couple questions. One's kind of, I think, easy. For continuing to review and revise safety protocols, could we add safety and healthcare protocols into that, maybe? Just kind of thinking about our nursing offices and protocols in place, especially And I mean, as you know, my big thing is transparency. How do we talk to parents? How do we, when do we send a letter? When do we call the parents? So I think that is great, that we're going to be doing that. And anything that we can do to support that would be awesome. How do we pick the kids in the groups that meet with the superintendent?
Yeah, so I was going to have a conversation with the building principals about that. To some degree, I'd like it to be fairly random.
Yeah.
But then there are some kids that aren't going to want to talk to me.
Right.
Right? So that's okay, too. So I don't know if maybe we'll put something out like, would you be interested? And then that's the pot of kids that it randomly gets chosen from.
They have to put their names in a hat or something.
Yeah, you know, I don't want to force anybody to do it, but I want everybody to have a fair chance to do it. And so I think based on the level of interest will determine how many sessions I have, right? So if there's a big interest, we can always do a few of those, right? If there's not so much, it can be fewer. So I think that's what I'm kind of looking at. I've been thinking that through, and I don't want to just pick kids, because some kids don't want to be put on, like in that position, to say something, you know?
Sometimes you don't always get the honest feedback when you just get the kids who everything is sunshine and rebos.
Yeah, yeah.
I think you also have those kids through the chair, I'm sorry. Those kids who want to speak but are afraid to as well. So I'm not sure if maybe it's something that they can kind of almost like blindly, like quietly put their names on papers and put in, and then maybe be chosen that way for those kids who want to speak but are afraid to raise their hand and be like, yeah, I want to do it.
Through the chair, I think we're lucky in that you were building principal, so these kids know you. And I'm sure they see you as approachable, which will be very beneficial.
The other piece of it is, is that we, I could do some listening sessions, and I could also put together a survey based on some of the same questions that I outlined. And then whoever wanted to respond, whether they respond verbally or not, right? Kind of takes the angst out of it for a lot of kids.
Yeah, my suggestion was going to be a survey. I think a lot of kids are a little bit more truthful.
Yeah.
In that regard, sometimes.
I think it's a step in the right direction, especially allowing families to get out and ask questions and speak their minds as well. So, great. I think it looks good.
Yep.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, there's your to-do list.
There it is. That's work. It's all yours.
On that note, next is the superintendent's evaluation. So I'm going to read this for the people at home and for all of you. The superintendent's current employment contract calls for her performance evaluation to be completed in October of 2022 to evaluate her performance from January of 2022, when she assumed the role as acting superintendent to the present. In your packet, you will find the pertinent pages of the DESI Superintendent Evaluation Form, along with the DESI rubric that defines the performance rating for each indicator. Each school committee member should respond to each of the indicators noted under each of their performance standards to the best of their ability as exemplary, proficient, needs improvement, or unsatisfactory. If a member does not have knowledge of a particular indicator, they should leave it blank. Members may also provide comments related to their selections for each overall standard, but comments are not required. The forms should be completed and sent to myself by September 30th. And I will compile the results and share them at the October 19th school committee meeting. These results will be used by the superintendent to set goals for the 2022-2023 school year to be shared with the committee at a later date. Also included in the packet is a survey conducted by the superintendent with all staff who directly report to her and the responses that were submitted unanimously. A set of email correspondences received from stakeholders is also included for your review. And both of these items can be considered as evidence of her performance.
So just what are we filling out now? We got everything with the blue link?
Yeah, and then there's, these pages are to be filled out.
Oh. I have those?
Yeah, so.
First five pages.
First five pages are what you're going to mark up. And then after that are.
Is the rubric.
Yeah.
Yeah, so you're going to mark IA, IB, IC, ID, IE, IF, either U, needs improvement, proficient, or exemplary. And then you're going to go on to the next standard, which is 2A, B, C, D, E. Same thing. 3A, B, C, D, and then 4A, B, C.
So who bring them back by the next meeting? You're all set?
By the 30th.
Okay.
Yeah, plenty of time. And I mean, yeah, that'll give me enough time to go through them.
And there is evidence for these, Dr. Chamberlain?
Well, I provided some evidence. So I provided you the survey that was completed anonymously by the staff who report directly to me, along with some emails that I've received from stakeholders since I've been in this position. And then certainly, any discussion that's taken place here throughout our meetings in your tenure can be used. Your experience as parents can be used. Conversations you've had with other guardians or families related to things that have happened in the district can be used as well. If there's something you come along that you feel you don't have evidence for, you just leave it blank.
Okay. And any comments can be added to the bottom of each page. There's a box there. All right, great. Yeah, did we? We have to go on that, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. All right, I just want to throw out one little snippet here, just for the people at home as well. The role of the school committee when it comes to this, and actually, all of school shenanigans and everything that happens. Our role is governance rather than management. School committee thereby focuses on the what and why of the superintendent leadership rather than the how. So there is kind of like some blurred lines there. I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page, that we are all about the how in providing the resources and the means and everything, you know, meeting the needs of our students and staff. So, and the focus primarily should be on the outcome of the superintendent's work rather than the details of the implementation. That's all I got to add to that. All right, and I need a motion to, let's see.
I'll make a motion to approve the process outlined above for the performance evaluation of the superintendent for October of 2022 per her employment contract.
I'll second.
All right, any more discussion or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right. Okay, moving on, the Assebit Valley Collaborative Board of Directors.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As has been done in the past, the superintendent serves on the Board of Directors for the Assebit Valley Collaborative as representing you, the school committee of the Auburn Public Schools. This requires that you vote to appoint me as this representative. I do have a letter from Kathy Cummins, the executive director, included in your packet from ABC. And I don't know if anyone has any questions about that.
Can I get a motion?
Make a motion to appoint the superintendent as the APS representative to the Assebit Valley Collaborative Board of Directors.
I'll second that.
All right, any discussion? Just one more thing for you to do, Dr. Chamberlain. There you go. That's all of yours. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. There you go. All right, and on to the teaching and learning report, which I am happy to turn over to Mr. Keller.
Well, thank you very much for the opportunity to be here tonight. And I just want to say briefly, and I will keep it brief, it's been a pleasure to join Auburn Public Schools and be part of the team here. I left that community where I was for 15 years, and that was not an easy decision. I was principal for 12 years there and thought that I would struggle. But, and of course, I'd miss my old district and school, but I felt incredibly welcomed. Dr. Chamberlain has been a tremendous mentor, the people in this building, and the people in all the schools. Like, you know, Dr. Chamberlain talked earlier about the strategic plan, and members here have been part of that team. That says a lot about the school and the districts, the number of people that came together over the summer to work on that document, which is not easy work by any means. So it's really been a pleasure to be part of that group and part of the team. And I feel like I've been here for a while, and I've felt really welcome. So I want to start by saying that. So thank you to everybody. I'm excited to be part of this team. So summer is usually a time of rest and rejuvenation, and often it is. And I've been kind of hitting the ground running, getting to know people. And for teachers, it's a great opportunity to get some curriculum projects off the ground where they don't necessarily have the time to do so during the school year. So we had 23 curriculum development projects that staff took on over the course of the summer. Like I said, it's a nice opportunity to have uninterrupted time to collaborate with others and think about what went well in the past year, what can be refined, or what new things we want to take on. So I haven't included all of those in the packet that you have, but just to highlight a couple of the things that were approved that I've had an opportunity to review. We had staff refining scope and sequence in science, technology, and engineering, as well as in our health curriculum. We had staff deepening Tier Two and Three interventions in reading and writing. We had revised procedures for our Bright program, expanding universal design for learning programs and activities that were taking place in the classroom, the creation of a new literacy class, which was at the middle school, and strengthening consistency in writing practices and routines. The teachers certainly appreciate the time to do that. We appreciate the work that they do. And when we look through it, it really enhances the things that our students receive in the classroom, so.
That's great. Yeah, we have an awesome faculty to go out of their way and, you know, do that during the summer, so. That's great. Any discussion or questions or?
Nope.
Great. All right, you nailed it, your first one. Thank you for that report.
My pleasure.
All right, business and financial.
Good evening, everyone. I provided in your packet, as I promised, the omnibus transfers that we used last year to close out. They were omnibus transfers one through five, which I processed through with the town to ended up closing out FY22. So those are included for your information. And then I also have closeout documents that I've provided to the town, CFO Casanovaiz and Mr. Zidellis, who will be taking over as the town accountant in the near future. So the three memos explain, basically, the first one I have is the revised carryforward request that puts an amount of $149,232.52 from the FY22 to carry over into FY23. And basically, it was for any time sheets that came in, like after the fact of June 30th. It was for work that was done prior to June 30th, but the time sheets might not have come through, so we had to pay those. So that was payroll items. And then also, open purchase orders. Like we, every, at the end of the year, well, we have several purchase orders at the end of the year that we haven't either received the products or, you know, we're waiting on invoices to pay those. So we carry forward that money so that we'll have that available. And we've been through the recent warrants diligently ebbing away at that. So that should be, that amount of money should be gone shortly. But that's basically for that. And then the other two is just looking to carry forward prior year articles and the current year articles so that we can keep that money. It just requires a request to the town to carry that forward. So those outline the different school department articles